Hello, I'm Jamie Abrahamian, Locken Yata Council PTA President. I'd like to welcome you tonight to our School Board Candidate Forum. I'd like to thank the Pasadena Women's League of Voters for co-hosting this event and for their volunteers for putting in lots of time and effort to make sure that this runs smoothly. I'd also like to thank our four candidates for deciding to run and for making a difference in our schools. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we have a lovely moderator, Veronica Jones, who will be asking our questions and introducing our candidates. Thank you very much for attending, and we look forward to a fabulous forum. Take it away, Veronica.
I'm unable to start the video. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Locken Yata Unified School District Candidate Forum. We thank the candidates and you for your participation. I am Veronica Jones, a member of the League of Women Voters, the Pasadena area, including Monrovia as one of the San Gabriel Valley communities that we serve. The League's charter is to promote informed and involve participation in government through education and advocacy. We study and act on public policy issues, but never endorse or support candidates or parties. We assist in forums like this one as part of our voter service program. In the November 3 election, there are four candidates competing for two seats on the Locken Yata School Board for a term of four years. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce the rest of the League's team here working with me. In addition to myself as moderator, we have Hester Bell as timekeeper. We have Maureen Johnston and Allison Henry as question sorters. The rules for this forum, which have been agreed on by all candidates, are as follows. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. The candidates will be speaking in an order chosen in advance prior to the forum. The timekeeper will keep the candidates informed of the time remaining and will raise a red card when his or her time has elapsed. Once the candidate's time is up, he or she should conclude their statement as quickly as possible. Once opening statements are completed, candidates will begin answering questions. There has been a large number of questions submitted in advance, so I will start with those. If the time permits, we will take questions that can be submitted in the chat. We may not get to all of your questions tonight, but please feel free to reach out directly to the candidates to get your answers. If you submit questions in the chat, they must follow the following guidelines. It must be a question and not a statement. It should be directed to all candidates. There will be no rebuttals. If there are several questions on a similar issue, they may be grouped together and presented as one question. Questions must deal with the issues of this election only. There will be no personal references or attacks allowed. All questions asked or unasked remain the property of the League of Women Voters Pasadena area. They are never distributed to the press or other third parties. Please note that questions are sorted to combine duplicates and eliminate any that are an attack on a candidate. If you feel your question has been misinterpreted, please feel free to resubmit it in the chat. Due to time limitations, not every question may be asked. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question and will be tracked by the timekeeper. There'll be no rebuttals. At approximately eight o'clock, the question period will end and closing statements will begin. Each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement, and the statements will be given in the reverse order from the opening statements. Remarks will conclude after all statements are made, and there will be no opportunities for rebuttal. The candidates will begin speaking in the following order. We'll start with Carolina Anderson, followed by Jeremiah Arnold, then we'll have Josh Epstein, and then we'll have Belinda Randolph. And we'll rotate the candidates up with each question as they're asked. Thank you. Let's begin with the questions. Actually, we're going to begin with the opening statements. Do we have everybody there? Okay. Okay, Carolina, you want to start with your opening statement?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Locken Yata PTA Council for hosting this event. I also want to acknowledge and thank everyone who is taking the time to listen in to make informed decisions. I'm a mom of two boys, one at Palm Crest and one at the middle school. I'm running for school board to protect and advance our community's culture of educational excellence. Our district has a tremendous foundation that has led us to be a top-ranked district in the state. We need to embrace and celebrate our traditions while still evolving to ensure our students are cutting-edge leaders in our society. As a school board member, my primary job is to represent the students, parents, and teachers to ensure, one, they are prepared academically with the knowledge and skills to successfully navigate their future, and, two, have a school environment that supports their personal growth. I will also represent the parents and citizens of our community to safeguard the fiscal responsibilities of the school district and continue building partnerships among all stakeholders. What sets me apart from the other candidates is my proven track record at every level, from being a room rep to organizing school-wide events and doing car line every morning, taking on broader roles on the PTA Executive Board, including being the current president at Palm Crest. I was on the Locken Yata Flint Ridge Educational Foundation for six years, where I helped raise over $12 million for the district and was its president in the 2018-19 school year, as well as numerous district committees. My dedication is not just for our schools, but also our community. I led the outreach efforts when we passed the parcel tax, and I'm now part of the Oversight Committee to ensure the funds are spent appropriately. As an Asian Pacific Islander, it is important to me to represent our diverse community and ensure every single student, regardless of race, color, creed, identity, or belief, feels valued for who they are as individuals. I want to deepen the connections that are the hallmark of our schools, give voice to every student, parent, and teacher, and create a healthy, thriving community for us all. Thank you.
Okay. And remember to mute and unmute yourself. I forget. Okay. And also, I said, put your questions in the chat. Actually, they're in the Q and A. Make that correction and make that clear. So, all, anyone who would like to type a question, please put it in a Q and A, not the chat. Thank you. Okay. We're going to go with Jeremiah. Jeremiah, you have your opening statement. You have two minutes.
Good evening. My name's Jeremiah Arnold. I'm campaigning to serve on the LCUSD Governing Board. For most of you, this is likely the first time we're meeting. I want to thank you for attending this event. I believe I'm the right choice, and by the end of the night, I hope you will agree. I'd like to take this opportunity to also thank the League of Women Voters and Locken Yata PTA Council for hosting this candidate forum on behalf of our community. Events like this are important because debate is a healthy part of governing and a valuable component to our democratic process. I'm a husband, father, and real estate investor who spent 15 years in the startup industry. My wife Stephanie and I met at UCLA, where I attended on merit scholarship. We've been homeowners in this community for almost 12 years. We're raising two children in the community, Robbie 11, Ben 9. Both of them attend Locken Yata Elementary, where my wife and I are deeply involved as parent volunteers. My campaign slogan is "Investing in our Future, Honoring our Legacy." My platform addresses many important issues pertaining to our schools. At this particular moment, I want to highlight three of these. One is getting our kids back to school. Two is assessing, addressing our looming fiscal challenges. And three is making sure our kids have a safe and secure learning environment. I didn't grow up in Locken Yata Flint Ridge. I grew up in the inner city of Los Angeles. I recognize I'm an unexpected candidate. I haven't been on every committee. I haven't been on every board meeting. But I believe my background and my professional skills transfer well to the needs of our district. I prioritize the children of this community. And as a parent of young children, I'm committed for the long haul. My promise is to ask the difficult questions and do what's right for our children. I invite you to join me in investing in our future and honoring our legacy. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to hear from Josh Epstein.
First, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters and the Council PTA and to Jamie for working with us to arrange this event. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to everyone. I think it's been uniquely challenging during this campaign to sit down and have real conversations about identifying problems and sharing ideas and experiences. So, thank you all for taking the time to be here, listening, and engaging. Tonight, I want to cut through some of the noise and talk about policies I believe in, about the experiences I have had that I think will allow me to be thoughtful and make considerate and even-handed decisions for our children's education. I've been volunteering in this community for over 11 years now. During that time, I have worked at the school level with my children at PCY, at the district level as a former president and six-year member of the Educational Foundation. I've also volunteered at the community level as the co-chair of both the bond and the most recent parcel tax campaigns. And during those 11 years, I have worked with hundreds of other dedicated parents and community members, many of whom I now call friends. Together, we have strived to increase awareness on issues and raise the money necessary to make sure our schools have the resources to be the best they can be. But in all those years, with all those volunteers, I can probably count on one hand the number of people whose political affiliation I was ever aware of or cared about. It didn't matter because we were working toward a goal that transcended politics and partisanship. We were working towards making our schools a better place. In fact, that dynamic is one of the things that drew us to Locken Yata. Of course, our family came for the schools. Many of us say the same thing because Locken Yata has a culture of excellence in education that we agree with and support. But we also relish that Locken Yata seemed to rise above and act independently of any national political chaos. Instead, as a community, we pride ourselves on the fact that we cherish hard work, dedication, and thoughtful nuanced approaches to problem solving. And we have always sought our leaders to do the same. So, I look forward to answering your questions tonight and sharing my experiences as the only candidate with children at all three school levels. And as a faculty member at USC, the only candidate who knows firsthand the challenges we are facing as educators. This is an incredibly difficult time for our schools, and I believe that with my experience, my ability to work as a consensus builder, and my track record of success as a volunteer leader, I would be an excellent choice to rise above the politics and do what's right for our students and our community. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Belinda Randolph?
Hi. My name's Belinda Randolph, and my husband and I moved to Locken Yata in 2003 with our two young boys. I studied engineering at Berkeley and Stanford. No PhD for me. And now I'm a JPL engineer, and I work developing software for the Mars 2020 rover operations. When we had kids, we made a decision between public and private schools, and we chose public because we believed in having a local neighborhood community associated with our school that we both didn't have in our own private schools. Throughout the years, we've had tough times. We've had bullying, a serious injury, homeschooling, 504s. And these experiences helped open my eyes and helped me to understand what was going on in other people's lives. My kids have been excelling. I have a gymnast, an Eagle Scout, a black belt. They took honors in AP and community college classes and summer classes. One studied computer science at Berkeley, and one went off for aerospace engineering at Cal Poly. I believe in education, and I have consistently advocated for all students over the past 10 years. I support STEM heavily. And in doing so, I have reviewed course descriptions and textbooks and even supported the idea of STEM in extracurriculars. I've worked consistently for the enforcement of board policies like teacher feedback, anti-harassment, better discipline processes, and conflict of interest situations. And I go to school board meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That wraps up our opening statements. We're going to move on to our questions. But I want to remind everybody again, if you have a question, if you're in the audience and you have a question, please use the Q and A. And if you think your question did not get answered, and we have time, just put it in the Q and A toward the end of the meeting. I'll let you know when I've finished up on the advanced questions. And if you didn't hear your question, just put it in the Q and A, and we'll try and get to it. Okay. Candidates, you have one minute to answer the following questions. And we're going to start with Caroline. Carolina, the question is, outline your education and how that education has prepared you for leadership as a board member.
Well, my pathway's been a little different than everybody else's. I grew up in Locken Yata, and I went to Glendale Community College for two years, and I said, this isn't for me. I'm going to start working. Went into business, did office management, HR. Then, when I got married and had kids, I delved right into volunteering. So, my background in HR for work has helped me. And then definitely, being on the PTA, the LCETF, numerous district committees, has helped me to be prepared for this job. I've made a lot of, I might not say friends, but I've worked with a lot of stakeholders, and this is what I'm meant to do.
Thank you. Jeremiah Arnold? The same question. Outline your education and how that education has prepared you for leadership as a board member.
Thank you. So, my education is pretty conventional in terms of standard schooling, public school, inner-city LAUSD. From there, I attended UCLA on a merit scholarship and then moved into the area or the arena of technology from a professional capacity. As a technologist, you have to continue your education at all times because that industry as a whole has a tendency to iterate so quickly. So, I have been learning consistently since a child all the way through my professional technology career. And even to this day, as I attempt to keep up on the latest and greatest in the world of tech, I still consider myself a learner. I believe this prepares me for a position on the board because I can identify with the requirements and the strategy behind preparing children for the life ahead of them. I think that my life story also plays a role in that in terms of overcoming adversity, in terms of excelling and achieving. And so, I hope that I get a chance to bring this totality of experience to the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Josh Epstein, you have one minute.
Yes. So, a little-known fact about me is that I grew up and attended public school in North Dakota. And then I went on to the University of Chicago, where I got a degree in public policy. During that time, I developed a love for theater and arts. And so, after I finished my degree in public policy, I began pursuing a career in the arts. And I went to NYU to get my MFA in theatrical design. And ever since then, I've been a theatrical designer. I think that combination of training and then the skills that is brought about give me a unique perspective. I have the macro, the ability to see macro. And my public policy education really taught me to take the long view and get the distance view on problems and think creatively about big-scale problems. My arts training has given me the opportunity to be empathetic and understanding. And I think that combination makes for an excellent school board member. And I look forward to getting that opportunity hopefully. Thank you.
Belinda Randolph?
Hi. I started in private schools for two years in San Francisco, and then I did a lot of public school work and then eventually went back to private schools in San Francisco. During that time, I was an extreme introvert and very socially isolated and bullied. And those experiences have helped me be more understanding. I then went on to Berkeley to study engineering. And for those of you who don't know engineering, it's not just math and science. It's problem solving, which is something our district drastically needs, we need. And it's also planning, like operations and planning sequence of events. And that's something that will be greatly useful for COVID. And it's a lot of intense reading of documents and textbooks and analyzing them. And that is incredibly important for reading budgets and board policies. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the second question, which expands on the first question. Why are you running for Locken Yata School Board? And what are your goals if you become a board member? So, we're going to start with Jeremiah.
Thank you. I'm running for school board because I believe that this is my time. My entire career, professionally speaking, has been building towards two things. One being a technologist and one being a real estate investor. And it just so happens that those two skill sets, those two sets of transferable skills align well with what our district needs right now. If we think about the district needs, we're in the midst of a pandemic. We have become more dependent upon technology than ever before. And my technology skill set lends itself to addressing those new needs. I feel that my real estate skill set also translates well because that's given me exposure to the construction management side of real estate. And as we all know, we're about to set out upon some major modernization projects. And so, I feel like that skill set also translates well given the current needs of our schools. I also feel passionately that in addition to these more surface-level or on-the-face issues, there's also an issue of school safety. And I believe that my position on that is also something that we need to be cognizant of, something that we need to take into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, Josh?
My volunteer time with the district really started 11 years ago because we moved here not really knowing anyone, and we looked to build community and to build relationships. And it has expanded since then to be something that is near and dear to my heart and really something that feels incredibly important to me. And I feel like I started because it was about the schools, and I've moved to the point now where I think my volunteer time with the district has really become about the community. And it's when I began working on the bond fund and the parcel tax and realized that the schools just have such an impact on the community, not only in the short term, when my kids are in school, but in the long term, when we look at what's going to happen generations down the road and how we can make an impact. And that's really what led me to want to be on the school board, to help make an impact, to make a difference in this community. Hopefully, we'll be able to talk about goals as we move forward because one minute is a very short amount of time. So, I'll get to goals as we move forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for staying within the time. Belinda?
I'm running for school board because I just love going to school board meetings. I started out as volunteering at PCY and did all of the typical volunteer work. And that wasn't where I belonged so much. There's areas where, and when I finally moved to the board, I was able to use my strengths and passion effectively. I'm running for school board because I really want to work towards enforcing board policies evenly and fairly. And there's a lot of areas where I've been already actively doing that in terms of teacher feedback, essays, and timely feedback, and test return policies, discipline situations, and also working towards getting adult supervision to improve student behavior. This work back in 2005, when students were bullying on the soccer field, and I suspect it would work at LCHS. I also want to proactively help IEP students and help them have a place in our school. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We're on number three now. Okay.
But you skipped me.
Oh. Caroline, thank you.
Problem.
Okay.
I'm going to jump into goals. I'm going to start the diversity, equity, inclusion initiative. Protecting every child and teacher in the classroom is a priority. So, I want to prioritize initiatives that promote a safe learning environment free of harassment and bullying for all students and staff. Two, get kids back into the classroom, whether that be indoors or outdoors. I would keep our community updated regarding progress. Listen to family experiences regarding the case. And answer questions that may surface. It is vital that we are responsive to families and maintain open communication. And my third goal, social and emotional wellbeing of our students. This is paramount for me. I was fortunate enough to be a part of bringing the Wellness Center to fruition, working with the high school staff, the foundation, the PTA, and the boosters to create a safe space for our students where they can seek advice and get counseling. I'll continue to be an advocate to keep all services provided by the Wellness Center open and available for all students. As we emerge from this pandemic, the services and resources provided by the Wellness Center is a critical component as we adjust for a new reality. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize again for that. But we're on our third question, and we're going to start with Josh. And Josh, the question is, what will you do different than what has already been done at the school district?
I think that there has been a lot that has been done well at the school district. And so, I don't approach it as trying to reinvent the wheel. But I do think there is room for improvement in a few items. I think the first is communication. I have appreciated over the years that the school board has gotten better at communicating with stakeholders. But I think one of the things that we can still continue to improve on is that we take in information as people connected to the district and particularly as the school board. And then we use that information. We listen. But when decisions are made, I think oftentimes the community's not informed about the whys and hows. And that is really important for me. I think this expectation that community members are listening to for our board meetings makes it difficult to really get communication. So, that's one primary way that I would change some of the things done at the board level.
Okay, thank you. Belinda? Your turn.
Well, first off, I would continue having Zoom coverage of the board meetings for two reasons. One, there are a lot more parents and stakeholders participating in board meetings than there ever have been in the past 10 years. And that is exciting because the board represents the community. So, I'm really excited about that. Two, I love the sound quality in Zoom. It's much better than what is physically there in the boardroom. And that is one area I have not succeeded in fixing, but I would like to fix the sound quality in the boardroom so people with disabilities and hearing can actually hear what's going on during a board meeting. And then in general, the board meetings have increased in time. I have a graph that shows them going up in time over the years. And it's just going up and up and up. The board is covering a lot of information and talking and talking and talking, and they don't stop. Thank you.
Okay, Caroline? Caroline, your turn.
Thank you. We're fortunate to be in a district where we have parental involvement, teachers who are incredibly hardworking, and an administration that works well with both parents and the teachers. Our district has built one of the top districts in the state, and that's why people move here. As a smaller district, communication is also an asset. We're able to share information quickly as we garner feedback, and the district can adjust its path when needed. Knowing each other enables us to reach through the red tape that other districts are bound by. The opportunity for growth is in the social and emotional wellness of our students. We have definitely made great strides in bringing this to the forefront with being one of the first districts to engage with Stanford's Challenge Success Program, which pushed back our high school start time from 7:45 to 8:30. We opened a wellness center. The Wellness Center is now virtual and available for all grade levels, parents, and teachers. We know we have students that are struggling. As we move through and emerge from this pandemic... that are struggling. As we move through and emerge from this pandemic, the services and resources provided by the Wellness Center are critical as we adjust for a new reality. Thank you.
Jeremiah?
Thank you. There are a number of objectives that I would like to accomplish if elected to the board around school safety, improving traffic, efficiency of the board meetings, but I think one overarching change that I would like to see is that as my campaign has developed, one thing I've demonstrated is a willingness to ask the toughest of questions and the willingness to discuss things that aren't easy to discuss. I would like to see more public discussion at the highest levels of our decision-making around the board, around district leadership. I think that this would go a long way in terms of pulling the community in to these discussions that are happening so that when decisions are finally made, it's not unknown how we arrived at our destination. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, our next question, I think you've answered some of it, but let's give you a little more time to expand on your past experiences that have prepared you to be an effective board member. Okay, we're going to start with Belinda.
Thank you so much for that. My past experiences that helped me be an effective board member are both my education and my job experience. On my job, I work in mission operations for for both Earth orbiting satellites and for Mars rovers, and in both of those cases, they require intense advanced planning because we cannot communicate with the spacecraft in real time, so we have to plan in advance. That will allow us, that skill set will transfer over and be useful in terms of planning for COVID. It's a lot of planning. The other part of my past experience that is useful is the fact that I go to board meetings. Like, every single issue that's raised before the board is raised multiple times. There's a first reading and a second reading, so we all should know in advance if we go to board meetings. I also attended all the DEI events, as many as I could, and that helped me to be prepared for the DEI issues and to get to know the players and the issues early. Thank you.
Okay, Carolina? Am I saying Carolina? It's Caroline or Carolina?
It's Caroline.
Okay.
Princess.
Okay, thank you, Caroline. Thank you.
When my oldest son started school, I jumped into volunteering, first as a room parent, which quickly evolved into PTA, LCFEF, and various district committees, such as the school reopening committee, the LCAP committee, the parcel tax oversight committee. I believe having this experience in a variety of roles within the school district is invaluable. Having the experience of being president of both the PTA and foundation gives me a broader knowledge and vision of the district and its needs. I'm a passionate volunteer who believes in being in the trenches and making sure all students, teachers, and parents have a seat at the table as initiatives are implemented in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
Yes, thank you. So in terms of life experiences and how they've prepared me for this role, I have a very different background, very different perspective that I bring to the table. My life experiences are going to be very different than what we have seen traditionally from board members. I feel that a departure from the status quo is very important. Things like, for example, my technology experience exposed me to multiple opportunities to be part of a unicorn, right, a startup company that attains a valuation of $1 billion. There is an inherent and intrinsic experience there that is very hard to replicate, and I would love to bring that type of experience to our board. I'm going to also go at this from a slightly different direction and explain that perhaps some of my life experiences are going to prepare me because while I was out in the public sector gaining these transferable skills, it is true that I wasn't doing things like the volunteer positions that some of the other candidates had held. But I feel that that is important in terms of bringing diversity of experience, diversity of thought, and diversity of perspective to the board. Thank you.
Okay, Josh?
Yes, so I would really like to talk about my experience on two fronts, and the first is as a volunteer. I have, as I've mentioned, volunteered for the last 11 years, and some of that has been district-wide with the foundation, but I think the other part of that is co-chairing both the bond and the parcel tax campaigns. During that time, I learned a lot about the community, and I also built relationships with so many stakeholders across all facets of the community, and that has led me to really have a nuanced view of the district and of the community and how the schools fit in. The second thing I want to talk about is my experience as an educator, because I've both been volunteering and working as a designer and also as a teacher at USC. I've been a professor there in the School of Dramatic Arts, and I know what it's like to be an educator during these times. I know what it's like to work with hybrid learning. I know what it's like to work with distance learning. I understand how difficult it is to start back up after something like this, and I think that is, gives me a great experience.
Thank you. If I could just remind all the candidates to please watch the time and be mindful of that, finish your statement, but please be mindful of the time. Thank you.
And before we go on to the next question, could we please make sure that the questions are going in the Q and A? We can't answer you if you raise your hand. We have to have the question in the Q and A. Thank you. The next question is, what do you believe is your unique qualification, which makes you the better candidate for this position? And we're going to start with Caroline.
Well, what sets me apart from the others is my diverse background in the district and the community. As I stated before, I have done every role on PTA, I have done every role in LCFEF, I've been on numerous district committees. Aside from being a passionate volunteer, right, I've cultivated relationships that have garnered the respect of stakeholders throughout the district and community. I've consistently demonstrated my ability to work with a wide array of opinions and bring people together and get things done. Thank you.
Jeremiah?
Yes, thank you. What differentiates me is, again, a perspective and a background issue, right? I am bringing a different skill set to the table than we have seen traditionally on the board. In addition to that, I do think that it's worthwhile to mention that I do have a base of volunteer experience to draw upon. I have been on the site LCAP committee at La Cañada Elementary for the past five, six years, and the past two of those, I've been the chairperson of that committee. I have very proudly been a parent, not only volunteer and field trip chaperone, but also, you know, attended some of the overnight activities and really had a chance to spend a great deal of time on campus to understand what life is like for our students. And really, at the end of the day, that's where my priorities lie, is with the children and doing what's in their best interest. Thank you.
Josh, your turn.
I think what separates me, I've already touched a little bit, as an educator, I have some experience with distance learning and the perspective of an educator, and I think that's going to help us as we start getting back to school, and I think that's going to be important. The other thing that separates me is that I have students right now at all three school levels. I have a fourth grader at PCY, I have an eighth grader, and I have a junior in the high school, and those are tremendously different experiences, and I think they require a different understandings. The things I thought about when I had all my children at PCY are different than what I think about now, and I think bringing to the board someone who's got students at every level makes a difference when we're really thinking about the needs of all students. Thanks.
Thank you. Belinda?
Thank you. So while none of my kids are in school right now at La Cañada, they've gone through all four levels. We started at the elementary school, we went through seventh, eighth, we went through high school, and my kids have experienced college in both pre-pandemic and pandemic times. So I have a lot of experience of different varieties, and I get to see a college and how they are handling the pandemic. But the real reason that I'm different than all the other candidates is because I read board policies, and I communicate to the staff when board policies are not enforced, and I've worked with boards to revise board policy. And finally, I go to school board meetings. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to a little different subject. This has to do more with student welfare. So Jeremiah, you're going to answer this question first. Students need to maintain a good relationship with LCHS counselors so that they can receive good advice for applying to colleges, yet counselors are constantly changing. What is your take on this serious academic issue, and are you willing to allocate extra budget to improve the counseling department?
Thank you. My position on counseling is that it's vitally important to the success of kids, especially as they get to the higher grades of middle school and especially high school. I would absolutely advocate for increasing the number of counselors we have. It's my understanding based off of counselor-to-student ratios that that is an area where we can definitely improve as a district, so my answer is an emphatic yes. I absolutely feel that we need to hire more counselors and decrease our student-to-counselor ratio. Thank you.
Josh?
Yes, I have been, my students have been a part of this as counselors have changed over the years, and I do understand it to be an acute problem. I think one of the issues is that public schools all throughout California, the bar is so incredibly low when we talk about student-to-counselor ratio, that the student-to-counselor ratio across the state is so enormous that our ratio being, you know, hundreds to one is considered to be a real boon to our district, and I agree that it is not a great situation. I would like to see us concentrate on improving the situation with counselors and allocating funds where possible and where necessary to expand the counselor relationships, and also making sure that counselors are working on things that are aiding our students both day-to-day and in looking towards college.
Belinda?
So for me, the college counselors, I mean, the high school counselors have changed a lot, and I have to say that one of my counselors that my son had was fantastic, and I think my son might have spent every single Friday after sixth period with her for an entire year, and the next year, he was lucky even though he shouldn't have gotten her based on alphabet. They made a special point because he had a special relationship with that one counselor, and so they let him stay with her even though the alphabet didn't dictate that. I think it's really important that we give kids who need special relationships a little extra priority, and, you know, some kids just fly through the system and everything works, and other kids need extra care, and I have to say that my kid got the extra care that he needed. Yes, it would be great if we had more money. Yes, it would be great if we could retain counselors. Hopefully, we can improve our working environment for them. I don't know where the funds would come from, so I cannot make a promise about funds I cannot control. Thank you.
Caroline?
So the state is, counseling ratio is 600 to 1. La Cañada is right now about 300 to 350 to 1. So we're still doing pretty well compared to the rest of the state. I know we can do better. But the great part about it is we have a wellness center, and like I said, social emotional wellbeing of our students is paramount for me, right? Being able to have that extra counseling in a different way will really, really help our students because our students will have multiple pathways, right? You don't need a college counselor 100% of the time. This gives our children a broad reach and different information coming from different ways to be able to become a whole child. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the next question. What are your recommendations to support our struggling learners and special needs students in the district? And Josh, you're up first.
This is an incredibly complicated question and one that is going to take far more than a minute to address. So I think that there are a lot of things we can do to better help our special needs students. One of the things I would like to focus on is really about helping our families with special needs, and that is to give our families an opportunity to get together in ways that are developed and run by the district. I think right now, families are sort of trapped looking for counseling from each other, and they don't have the opportunity to sort of speak as a group to each other or in town halls or other things. So that's one of the things I would primarily focus on in the beginning, is a way that we could get families the opportunity to speak to each other, to form a network, and I think that would be beneficial to all.
Belinda?
Yes. So officially, special ed families can communicate with each other through Sefa, which is an organization, and we have a Sefa that covers three school districts. That program has not been very accessible, and teachers and district staff go to them, and families actually do want to discuss things in private because that way they can talk freely without fear, and that is very important. I opened a Facebook group, it's a very small group that was by invitation only a couple of years ago, to invite people of special ed so that they could communicate and address their issues. IEP should come first, not last, and I was very disappointed about the planning program and how they were, they just appeared to be last on the list. And in addition, you know, Wendy promised us a town hall for special ed two board meetings ago, and that was going to be a monthly town hall, and that never materialized, and I think special ed deserves the attention it needs. Thank you.
Caroline?
Our district does care deeply about every child and works hard to provide the supports needed. We must continue to work together to engage, support, and challenge every student by addressing individual needs and providing differentiation at all levels. Sorry, it's a little, you know, nerve-wracking up here. In speaking with special ed parents recently, I heard a need to have them learn about the services provided by the Wellness Center. I took the initiative to reach out to the district and was able to set up a virtual walkthrough of the Virtual Wellness Center. It's not about words, it's about getting things done, and that's the person that I am, and that's what I will fight for, for our special needs kids. Thank you.
Jeremiah?
Thank you. So special needs is something that I have personal experience with. One of my children is special needs, and so I can speak to this from that personal experience. I can tell you that the key is communication and partnership between the parents and the district, and it's not just at the beginning of the year and throughout the year, but year to year, from teacher to teacher, as that student moves from grade to grade. Another thing that's certainly true with regards to IEPs is that one solution does not fit all, and as plans are being made, as we're formulating ideas for returning to in-person learning, I believe that special needs is something that needs to be considered thoughtfully and thoroughly in light of the fact that one solution does not fit all. We're going to have instances where special needs children have been particularly impacted, and we're going to also have situations where perhaps the distance learning configuration is helpful. So it's something that we need to be thorough about in our consideration of how we go back to school for in-person learning around special needs.
Okay, moving on to school reopening. Belinda, you're going to be up first. Do you see La Cañada High opening again in 2020?
To be perfectly honest, I don't. I would be quite stunned if the LA County Health Department decided to let us open in January. In my own work situation, it doesn't look possible. I just sat through an hour of return-to-work training and all the things that I would have to do as an adult to make my workspace safe, and I do not see kids being able to step up and do the steps that JPL recommended. or my workplace recommended. And it seems very, very challenging. So I would rely on science to decide when we return to work. However, I do know that certain kids need to return to school sooner. And those are the special ed students and the families that just cannot function without the school time that their kids need. And they need those resources, they need those specialists, they need those services. And currently, they're challenging, and some kids are really struggling. Thank you.
Caroline? Same question.
Thank you, Veronica. I would love to go back to school, who wouldn't? But only when it is safe for our kids and our teachers to go back. It isn't a decision by the governing board to make. The district has a tier to Los Angeles County Public Health. Our focus at this time needs to be on how we can make a difference, make distance learning the best for our kids. How do we take this opportunity to work together? Show our kids how to adapt, how to work around difficult situations, and make it best for everyone involved? How do we work together to ensure the best virtual learning experience for everyone until we can open? Of course, we will still need to look ahead and figure out how we need, what we need to do to make sure that we are prepared to reopen when the time comes. Thank you.
Jeremiah?
Thank you. Um, I've been very encouraged by what I've seen around athletics, not just in our district, but in the surrounding communities and other schools that are part of our community, opening and providing the kids with an opportunity that they seem to desperately want, and that's returning to school. I'd like to see them get that opportunity. Now, in terms of reopening schools, this provides an excellent opportunity for us to explore the concept of equity. Locking out of Flint Ridge has met the infection rate requirements to reopen our schools. Unfortunately, Los Angeles County at large has not. The Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors recently voted in favor of an equitable reopening process, which gives priorities to schools that serve a higher number of low-income families. Not only does this program prevent our community from reopening schools on the basis of our infection rate, but it also puts us at the back of the line in terms of applying for waivers. I feel this is an example for individuals to explore on your own to understand your personal feelings on equity. Thank you.
Josh?
Uh, yes, I, you know, I have been a part of the secondary reopening committee. And, and I think that, that over that time, I've realized just how difficult it is to reopen. And I agree with Belinda. I don't see the county being in a place to reopen by December, the end of December in 2020. I hope that we can reopen after that as infection rates go down and science gets better. Um, but again, it is out of the hands of the district right now. Uh, I do think that what we need to concentrate is getting the most, the highest need students back in. And those are the special needs students and then the TK through second-grade students. And we should do whatever we can to get those students in and not jeopardize that. I also think that reopening in a hybrid way needs to be a better option than virtual. And we need to make sure that we are looking at something that is actually a better option. And if it's not, we need to figure out whether we need to start, do a rethink.
Okay, the next question, um, we've hit on it in the reopening of the school. But this one is specific to athletics. How will you reopen the athletics department? And Caroline, you're first.
Well, I know, um, the last governing board meeting, they have actually opened practice for our kids. Um, it's not something our district gets to make the decision on in a vacuum. We have to talk to CIF, we have to talk to the league that we play in. Of course, I would love to be back. My son, who plays on two, you know, basketball teams, hasn't been able to play in seven months. So I would continue to work with the board and work with the district to see how we can get sports back sooner than later. Thank you.
Jeremiah?
So I'm ecstatic about the recent developments around athletics reopening. Um, I hope to continue to see, you know, more along the lines of what we're seeing the athletics teams be able to do. And I am in favor of that. I think that there are tremendous opportunities around building school spirit and giving kids the ability again to interact. Um, I'll certainly follow the science and advocate that we, as a district, do that. Um, but at the end of the day, we clearly know, everyone has stated, our kids want to be back in school. A lot of them want to be with their friends, they want to be playing sports. And so what I see from the athletics side of things is encouraging, and I hope that we continue to see more of that. Again, doing what is right for the kids. Thank you.
Josh?
Um, I agree, athletics, it's fantastic that we're getting back. And I think that the approach to athletics, which is right now, which is not about competitive play, but is really about the opportunity for students to get out there, to re-establish some relationships, to get some exercise outside. That's really what we should be focused on right now. The competitive play issue is really outside the hands of the district. Um, but I am all for getting outside activity that's safe and manageable. And I, and I hope we can continue that throughout the rest of, throughout the rest of the school year. Thank you.
Belinda?
Um, okay, so for some of you who know me, I am very into safety. Um, so if we're gonna do athletics, we better have masks, we better have social distancing, it better be outside. And that brings us to scheduling the fields and the outdoor spaces. Um, and so we have to schedule them among all the different users that want to do it. Baseball, basketball, JV, freshman teams, varsity. Um, and that should be done equally, in my opinion, for conditioning because we're not even ready for the competitive stuff. But the ultimate thing is wear the mask, keep the distance, and keep the kids and their coaches safe because we need our adults in our community to be safe. Thank you.
Okay, the next question deals with reopening, but it also is asking the mental health risk to students of sustained distance learning. How will you include that in the reopening? And do you think there are mental health issues? Um, mental health issues, I guess, aligned with sustained at-home learning. Does that make sense? Did I mess that one up? And the first, Jeremiah, you're gonna answer that first, if you understood.
I understood, thank you. Um, yeah, I absolutely believe that one of the largest impacts, one of the most troubling impacts that we're gonna deal with as we return to schools is gonna be the mental health of the children. Um, I can see it in my own kids that they want to be back. They want to be back in school with their friends. They want to be doing the things that they were structurally used to doing. And so I definitely feel strongly that mental health is a serious concern that is probably not being given as much light as it deserves. I, it's gonna be manifest in forms like drug use. Um, we're gonna see depression, potentially suicide. All of these things are gonna come into play and fall under this umbrella of mental health issues related to pandemic and this remote learning configuration. So yes, I do think that all of those things are gonna play into the mental health topic.
Okay, Josh, thank you. Josh?
Yes, um, I absolutely agree, mental health is going to be an issue moving forward. Different children are handling this in completely different ways. And I don't think it's, it's going to be as simple as saying, you know, we need across-the-board, uh, mental health, um, I mean, we need to cross-the-board mental health policy in order to deal with this because each student is dealing with it in a different way. So I think it's gonna be the job of the district to really sort that out, to figure out where did we, where did we fall down? Where are there losses that we need to make up? I think at the high school, we do have the Wellness Center, and I think we're gonna rely on that Wellness Center more and more as we move back. And I think that that's a fantastic asset. I do think we're gonna need to think about mental health at the elementary level. And, and do we have, um, do we have the capabilities to really deal with that with students in the way that we are currently formed? Or do we need to rethink how we address that when we move back? Thanks.
Okay, Belinda?
Thank you. Um, in terms of how kids are handling it, there is a small subset of kids, maybe the introverted type, that's actually doing better right now in the remote learning situation. And I think it's important to notice that. I know that one of my children is engaging more, participating more in his classes than he did in person. And he's actually thriving under that situation. Um, and I think that what we need to do now is to have our counselors be especially aware, checking in proactively with our students to find out if they think there's an issue with students. And I also think our parents need additional training because personally, I know I'm not trained to recognize mental health issues. I'm getting a little better at it. But I think the parents need training because we are the ones that are with our kids every day, and we need to have a sense of what the warning signs are that we need to look to, to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Caroline?
I love that this question keeps coming up because I keep saying social and emotional well-being of our students is paramount. I have two boys. One does distance learning, no problem. The other one is having a lot of trouble with it. We've given our teachers some professional development and training, and we need to continue to do that. Well, they're the ones who are with our kids the most academically. So we need to lean on them. As parents and teachers, we need to work together, you know, to ensure that they're getting what they need academically, but definitely socially. We need to continue to keep our eyes on them, right? I was very lucky to chair the gala that, um, made an unprecedented $220,000 to open the Wellness Center. That is what we will need to continue to keep our kids socially and emotionally safe. Thank you.
Okay, the next question. The school district is planning to return to the class on a hybrid schedule when Los Angeles County gives the green light. How do you think the governing board should proceed if the local teachers' union isn't ready to return in person? And we're gonna start with Josh.
Um, well, uh, I think that the governing board is, works with the district leaders to negotiate with the teachers. I know for a fact, teachers want to get back into the classroom as soon as they can, and they feel it's safe. I think it is the governing board's responsibility to, to work with the district to create that safety, that level of safety, and make sure that teachers feel comfortable. And I think then it's a negotiation. And, and I know that the teachers have already agreed to a number of things as we've looked to waivers, and they've already agreed for TK through second, or they're in the process of agreeing for the memorandum of understanding to make that waiver process possible. So there's, there's a lot of goodwill here. And I think it is really about working with teachers to make sure they're comfortable. This doesn't have to be a combative battle to get teachers back into classroom. It's all about making sure that everybody is safe.
Okay. Belinda, your turn.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so to get teachers to come back to the classroom is a tricky thing. And I think that I don't want to go back to work right now. Um, I luckily have the choice to stay home, and I hope that I will be able to continue that. And I understand why a teacher might want to stay home. And so what types of things would make me feel coming back to the classroom would be the implementation of cleaning procedures and of having students helping to clean the classroom in their own spaces, as well as the teachers having plexiglass to divide them between the students and the, um, and, and the, between them and the students. Um, I think a number of safety issues could be implemented to help them feel more comfortable. And that would be the way that I would work on it, is focusing it on pure safety and prevention of spread. Thank you.
Okay, Caroline? Your turn.
As a member of the secondary reopening committee, well, I know that the teachers and the district have already started working on an agreement to come back. We've already started down the road with getting our special ed kids back. We've sent in a waiver for our TK to second-grade kids. Um, I know that relationships matter. And being able to have a relationship with all the stakeholders makes it easier to sit down and have a conversation to get these things done. Thank you.
Jeremiah?
Um, yes, thank you. So I've spoken to teachers about this in some instances at length. And what's clear is that they also miss the kids and want to get back to teaching. So while I think that some level of, 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 let's say, misaligned interest is going to exist just by the very nature of the fact that we have a labor and management relationship here, um, I think that at the end of the day, each of the decision-making parties has a role to play here. The board has a role, the district administrators have a role, and the teachers have a role. And as long as all of those stakeholders are united in the common goal of doing what's in the best interest of the children, then I think that the objective of getting back to in-person learning is something that we can accomplish. Um, in addition to that, I also think it's very important that we take into consideration the role that parents play here because there are decision-makers at the district level, at the board level, and the teachers' union. Uh, but also what, what's important is let's not forget the community aspect of our parents. So as long as all of those decision-making parties have the same common goal, being what's doing, doing what's in the best interest of our children, um, I don't think that we, we will encounter that.
Thank you.
Okay, then, um, next subject is the DEI. So we just have a couple of questions there. And we're gonna start with Belinda. What are your thoughts on DEI implementation? And what would some of your goals and objectives be for this plan to make La Cuenyada a more inclusive district for all students and families?
I lost the mute button. Um, so I've read through the DEI report and the 23 recommendations, and most of them seem mostly implementable. So I would want us, our district, to hire one DEI consultant and get started on that in a very systematic way and figure out what we can do and what we can't do. There's constraints with the teachers' union and with California Ed Code and California Labor laws. So all of that influences how well we can implement each of those 23. Um, in terms of, I don't remember the rest of the question. Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. Okay, Caroline? Do I need to repeat the question?
Nope, I got it. Thank you. Let's make it clear. I'm 100% in support of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I applaud the district for starting this work over a year ago. We need to make sure that the facts about the district's DEI initiatives are cleared and not muddied with disinformation. I know conversations regarding DEI and the work that surrounds it is uncomfortable. But it is extremely important that we address this because it enables the district to protect all students and teachers from harassment and bullying. Throughout my campaign, I've stated how important it is to be inclusive and collaborative in order to achieve the best possible outcome for every student. There is no doubt that my track record speaks for itself. I've shown through my actions that DEI is a priority, from advocating for de-emergent, establishing outreach groups such as the Chinese Outreach, mentoring new families. And as PTA president, I recruited diverse members from the school community to help lead our schools. Because this work is important, the governing board and district need to build in set times to check in and make sure that we are still moving forward.
Caroline, your turn. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Jeremiah?
Yes, thank you. Uh, my position on DEI has been clear since the very beginning. Um, I think that all of the candidates that are campaigning for a seat on the board agree in that we want a diverse and inclusive learning environment. inclusive learning environment. None of us contest that. Where I differ from the other candidates is my preference for equal opportunity versus controlled outcomes. I think it's very important that we, as a district, take a step back and perhaps consider what is our primary objective, that being to provide an excellent education for our kids, okay? The core aspects of education. And I think that it's also important to consider the fact that independent site ratings, great schools, currently gives us a 10 out of 10 for equity across the board. And where we're falling down, albeit, and I will qualify that, this is primarily due to the fact that we did not do standardized testing at the end of last year, but nonetheless, it is in our core academics where we have seen a drop to nine out of 10. And so, again, my position on DEI has been clear from the very beginning. I do support a diverse and inclusive learning environment, just like everybody else.
Thank you. Josh?
I keep hearing it said that I believe in equality of outcomes, and honestly, that just couldn't be further from the truth. I absolutely believe hard work should be rewarded, and I absolutely believe that some students can and will get better grades and higher test scores, and that's the way it should be. I think everybody up here would say the same thing. What the real conversation lies is in this discussion about equity, because by saying you agree that there should be equality of opportunity glosses over the actual challenging part of this. How do you make sure students all have equal opportunity at the starting line? It isn't enough to say that just because you have a class available in school, that you've created equal opportunity to learn. If you put the class on the third floor of the building, and your school doesn't have an elevator, you haven't provided equal opportunity for students who can't climb stairs. We can all see that, so we fix that problem without a second thought. But what about if most of the classes our students have the opportunity to take, don't do an adequate job recognizing other races or genders or ethnicities, then maybe up to 50% of our students are not centered, they don't see themselves reflected in that class. Are those students getting equal opportunity? So this is, to me, is the DEI conversation. It's how do we build support systems, and how do we make sure students feel seen and heard?
Okay, Josh, thank you. Okay, the next question is, while many students see the necessity for DEI in our curriculum, this is of particularly importance for our students of color. How will you support a curriculum that reflects all of our students? And we're going to start with Caroline.
I am part of a multiracial family, and I believe in enhancing our curriculum to include materials that share perspectives of all people and their history, not just traditional textbooks. I would support supplementing curriculum that shows the impact of minorities on the history of California. Teachers have been receptive of this, and I think they will be started down this road. So... Sorry, lost my train of thought also. But basically, I do believe in enhancing our curriculum that includes materials that share perspectives of all people and their history. Thank you.
Jeremiah?
I think what I'd like to draw on here is the DEI statement that I submitted to the outlook last week. And in that statement, I shared areas where I agree with the findings of our DEI strengths and needs assessments, and then I highlighted an area where I didn't agree. And one of the important areas that I am in agreement with is that statistically speaking, what that report shares with us is that the vast majority of our students and teachers feel like it is a largely diverse and inclusive learning environment, where they feel comfortable confronting issues related to race and social justice. One of the things I did not agree with the report is in the recommendations for curriculum development resources. The 1619 Project was mentioned, ZIN and CANDY. Those are not ideals that I feel are appropriate for us to be teaching our children, and so that was an area where I disagreed.
Okay, thank you. Josh?
All right. I'll tell you what you don't need to do. You don't need to radically rewrite curriculum to fix this. You need to be aware of the issue, and you need to start with the low-hanging fruit. Can we change an essay here and there? Can we exchange a book here or there? My daughter's in AP Lang right now. There are four texts that are core text in that class, and they're all written by white men. In fact, we found that you are not guaranteed a text by a non-white male until 12th grade. There are easy changes here. People like Alexander Chi or Elizabeth Acevedo, they have a place in our curriculum, and that doesn't mean instead of Shakespeare or Camus, but in addition to it. We don't need to rewrite history to, you know, to offer our students essays that challenge their preconceived notions and expand their worldview, and those things are for everyone's benefit.
I guess I'm going to go.
I'm sorry, Belinda.
Thank you very much. It will be challenging to incorporate DEI curriculum changes in every subject. I read the La Cañada Alumni for Anti-Racist Education proposals, and they covered everything from English classes to computer science classes, and some are much easier to implement. I agree with Josh that in the subjects of English classes, it's the easiest language arts, because we can have the kids analyze a variety of different sources, and as a result, them write essays, which is part of the curriculum, writing essays. It's just what you're writing it on could change. One of the things I did at the end of 2019 school year was I gave a copy of the book Just Mercy to every single English teacher, counselor, and administrator at the high school, and I just said a note. All I said was, I like this book. I hope you like it too. And then I left it up to the teachers to decide what to do with that. I think that's an approach that would work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're approaching 7:50 right now. I'm going to take questions from the chat. So I'm going to look through here, and we're going to start with Jeremiah with the first question, and it's from the audience. What qualities or tactics would you utilize in order to persuade other board members of your position?
Well, so, okay. I think the way that I would use, the way that I would go about building consensus within the board is encouraging open discussion. I mentioned earlier that I am a fan of and advocate for a more public discussion at the board level. I understand that there's going to be times where things can't be discussed, but I do believe that being more transparent with our discussion would give the community a greater sense of involvement in what's going on. And so, more transparency and more public discourse around what the board is talking about, coupled with taking feedback from the community, I think it's very, very important that the board function on behalf of its constituents. It is an elected position. Constituents are responsible for that election, and so therefore, their positions, feedback, opinions, they matter, and the board needs to act accordingly. So I would point out those two things. One, it's better to discuss things publicly so that the community feels involved, and two, we need to take the community's position on things very seriously. Thank you.
Okay. Josh?
Yes. So, you know, the board is unique in the sense that there are five members, and nobody has any additional power. Even the president is at the same level as every other board member. And that means that in order to get anything done on the board, you're going to need at least the consensus of two other board members. So to me, this is not about tactics. It's about having conversations, open conversations, listening, and really taking the time to express why you feel a certain way about a certain issue, and making sure you're clear, and then listening to the other board members. And together, I think that's the way to reach consensus. It's been that way throughout my time, that we've, is when you start getting everybody in the same room, and you're talking, and you're listening, you can find consensus on many, many issues.
Belinda?
I have to agree with Josh on the idea of listening to what each and every other person has to say. I usually start before I show up at a board meeting by reaching out to the community and discussing agenda items ahead of time to formulate my ideas, and I try and get different opinions before I even show up on Tuesday night. And then I would like to see the board members, and then I would also do fully research it in terms of who I talk to, but also which documents I read, and invest the time that I need to ahead of time, so that when I come in, I can come in with very clear and concise statements about what I believe and why, and I think that would help. And if the other board members also did that, we could reach a consensus faster. And because we have the first and second reads, after the first read, we have almost a month to reach final conclusions, and so that's a lot of time to come up with a vote and to have everybody, all five people, be informed. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that was Belinda. So Caroline?
All five of us may have different perspectives, but our common goal is to do what is best for our students, parents, and teachers. The board is made up of five individuals with different viewpoints and backgrounds. We will not always agree. As PTA and foundation president, I've engaged in many discussions around tough issues. I've had the experience of listening to a variety of perspectives, digesting the information, and having to make tough decisions. If issues arise where I do not agree with my fellow board members, I would be comfortable with being a dissenting vote, knowing that I'm staying true to myself. Thank you.
Okay. The next question is, there is often a lot of negativity about LCUSD staff, teachers, and district on multiple social media outlets from parents and community members. As a board member, how do you plan on communicating the facts before inaccurate information is placed on social media? And we'll start with Josh.
I, you know, one of the things I think is really important to me is the idea of closing the feedback loop, of allowing, giving the board an opportunity to talk about why decisions are made, and how they're made, and finding ways to communicate better. Now, will that ever be fast enough for the speed of social media? No way. And truthfully, that is a battle that feels more and more hopeless every day. I see what happens on social media, and it enrages me at times and frustrates me. And so I, as a board member, would do my best to provide open, transparent decision-making, and to be honest with the public about why decisions are made, and in that way, I hope that you would provide some shield towards the attacks on social media, but it's very hard to control that.
Belinda?
Thank you. I'm going to agree with Josh in that when parents get frustrated at lack of information or lack of change when they raise an issue, they sometimes take it to social media, and in social media, or even in board meetings, they will name teachers and/or students, and that is problematic. We need to work towards preventing it. We cannot control the behavior of other people. We can only control the behavior of the district and the staff and the board members themselves. And so I agree that we need to be more proactive and get things out. And for the record, I've made many complaints about teachers in the past, but I don't use names in public. Thank you.
Caroline?
We've seen teachers grow tremendously in the last six months, especially in regards to distance learning and the use of technology. As a candidate, we all know that social media is a plus and a minus. As a role of a governing board member is to listen and to provide information, and to speak to misinformation. So if there's an individual complaint, it would be our job to redirect them to the channels. If you have a problem with your teacher, you should go to your teacher. If it's bigger than that, you go to your principal, and so on. So our job is to redirect and help the parents get to the right person for the answers that they need. Thank you.
Jeremiah?
Okay, so I will go on record saying that I do not believe that social media is the appropriate venue for communicating between partners. When I say partners, I'm referring to the district, the board, teachers, and parents. Social media, as we've seen, can be an incredibly toxic place, where misinformation can spread at an alarming rate, and it's often very difficult, if not impossible, to control the flow of misinformation. I am speaking from personal experience here. I think that it's just an inappropriate venue for the type of communication that needs to take place between true collaborative partners. If the district, if the board, if teachers and parents all want to have a collaborative relationship, then social media is not the way, is not the place to have that discussion.
Okay. I think I... And it's getting, we're going to start winding down in just a little bit. How do you approach circumstances in which you disagree with an action the board has taken? And we're going to start with Belinda.
Back in 2015, this district started down the path of replacing our math curriculum at the high school. The curriculum that I went through as a kid was algebra, geometry, algebra II, trig, precalculus, and eventually got to calculus. The new plan was supposed to be an integrated math program called LC Math 1, 2, and 3, and this was recommended by a UCLA consultant, Heather Dallas. I reviewed the plans for the three courses, and there were many missing topics necessary for calculus. There was no textbook that aligned with the course description, and which hurts all students, but especially hurts our IEP and 504 students. Also, initially, math teachers actually attended the math nights, but later, Mr. Cardinal was the presenter. There were a lot of warning flags about this program, and that is one area where I would not have adopted math, LC Math 1, and obviously the subsequent 2 and 3. Thank you.
Repeat the question. How would you approach circumstances in which you disagree with an action the board has taken? And it's Caroline's turn.
As I mentioned before, there are five of us with different viewpoints and backgrounds. We will not always agree, but it's our job to discuss and listen to everyone's input, and then make the best decision for our students, parents, and teachers. Lost myself again. I'm going to stop there because I lost my train of thought.
It's been a long evening. Jeremiah?
Yes, I'd like to ask if you could repeat the question, please?
Yes, I can. How will you approach circumstances in which you disagree with an action the board has taken?
Thank you. So the way that I would approach this has largely to do with consensus building. If I disagree with an action that the board has taken, then I would want to communicate about it. I would want to understand, first of all, why the board made the decision that it made, and then from there, iterate towards the solution, you know, that maybe accommodates my position more effectively, or an alternative position more effectively. So the question, as I understand it, is how would I approach a situation where I disagreed with something that the board has done? I would absolutely encourage open dialogue, discourse, even involving multiple stakeholders, multiple positions, and then once everybody has been heard, then we can reevaluate the situation for, you know, context, and make a different decision if necessary. But apparently, it's just a matter of building consensus and communication, which is what we're seeing here in the community today. So, thank you.
Josh?
I think, you know, one of the things that we haven't talked about is the way that the board conducts business, and the fact that, you know, there are two readings, there's a second reading on most issues, gives the community an opportunity, and that opportunity really only exists if you know that these issues have arisen. So in between the first and the second reading is really the opportunity to step in and say, okay, I've heard what you've said, and as a community member, I think there's a problem. And when that happens, I think the board has been very receptive. And so what I would encourage, both as a potential board member, but also just as a community member, is talking to the board and trying to understand all that's going into these issues, and to do it as early as possible, because I think then you have a better chance at a conversation than when you come in on the final reading of something, and a decision seems almost like a foregone conclusion. And so I would encourage everyone to learn as much And so I would encourage everyone to learn as much as they can and to act as early as they can on issues.
Okay. We're going to wind down, and the next question is, has to do with curriculum. What is done to provide civics education in La Cañada schools now? And Caroline, you will go first.
Can you repeat that again? Sorry, Veronica.
Yes. What is done to provide civics education in La Cañada schools now? Civics education. Am I not clear? Caroline, unmute. Caroline, you're muted. Caroline? Okay, let's, I'm not sure what's going on with Caroline. Jeremiah?
Yes, I'm here.
What is done to provide civics education in La Cañada schools? Civics, government, education about government, how to vote?
I would go as far as to say that probably not much. What should be done is that we should be teaching our children how both the state, local, and federal government systems function. We should be partnered with those systems to teach the children how things work at a government level, both, again, locally, at a state, and then at a federal level. So I think that it's one of the areas where we perhaps could do a much better job than we are doing to date.
Okay, Josh?
Um, when I think about civics, I think about being a good citizen. And to me, right now, in the world we're in right now, that is about being empathetic. It is about having an understanding of the world we live in, and it's also about critical thinking. And those things are part of our curriculum, and I would advocate that we move and expand the ability to be a critical thinker, to be empathetic, to be thoughtful. And that is, you know, it really relates back to letting people feel comfortable and to be exposed to a variety of opinions and a variety of different educational opportunities. And then we make good citizens. We make thoughtful citizens who can take in all the information and make decisions based on that information and vet what is important and what is not important, what is truth and what are lies. And I think if we can do that, we will have increased civic education in our schools.
Okay. Caroline is having technical difficulties, so we'll come back to her and give her another chance. Belinda, can you answer that question?
Excellent. Thank you very much. I think our teachers in the elementary schools do a great job of teaching civics. And civics at the lower eighth grades is really about understanding the difference between right and wrong and having our teachers help our students resolve conflicts with each other when there is a conflict. It's also, you know, teaching our students not to bully each other and how to include kids a little bit more than maybe comes naturally. So that's an elementary school approach to it, and they also probably have discussions and class discussions there. At the high school level, you know, first off, well, not at high school, but US History is taught in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade, and we do cover government and civics during that time. And in 12th grade, we cover actual government. And then in the English side, we have these things called Socratic seminars where students learn how to do polite discourse. And polite discourse in the setting of a Socratic seminar is what we really need in our society right now. Thank you.
I apologize about that, Veronica. All the days. Today was when Wi-Fi went out, twice.
It happens. We're getting used to this.
Again, I'm part of a multiracial family, and I do believe in enhancing our curriculum to include materials that share perspectives of all people and their history and not just the traditional textbooks. And in senior year, you get one semester of government, and it might not be enough, right? We need to do more and support supplementing curriculum that shows the impact of the minorities in the history of California. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to start with our closing statements. We have 226 people here. We have lots of questions. There's no way we're going to get to them tonight, so I just encourage everybody to go directly to the candidates to get your answers. And we hope this was helpful. But now we're going to do our closing statements, and the statements are going to be one minute. And we're going to do them in reverse order of how we started, and there will be no rebuttal. So you have one minute, starting with Belinda for your closing statement.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I believe that community service matters, and while I love my family time and my free time, I also feel like I have a deep responsibility to the schools. My passion for education and my unique job skills make me the perfect school board volunteer. I've been doing that for a while, and I'm also a person that's had kids that have had a range of struggles in their education, and that has helped me to connect with other families who have similar struggles as well. I love to dive into board policies. I love to attend board meetings. I love to email my board members ahead of time, before the first read, after the first read, before the second read afterwards. That's what I like to do. I want to be a board member because then I'll have more resources to enact the type of change that I believe is important, which is enforcing board policy so that everybody can have an equitable and access to education. Thank you so much.
Okay. Josh, your turn.
Uh, thank you so much for everyone's time tonight, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and the other candidates for an excellent discussion on the ideas and policies that hopefully will move our school forward over the next few years. We're at a tremendously challenging time for our district, and now more than ever, we are going to need to look to leaders who can make tough, thoughtful, and nuanced decisions about the future of our children's education. I hope you will agree that my experience in the district and my focus on consensus building throughout my years of volunteer service puts me in an excellent place to help guide us. If you have unanswered questions or want to know more about me and my policies, please continue to reach out. I'm happy to speak to anyone and everyone and listen to what your concerns are and your thoughts. I look forward to speaking with you and I hope to get the opportunity to work as a member of the governing board to make our district a better place. Thank you so much, and good night.
Jeremiah?
I'd like to thank everyone for attending this evening's candidate forum and participating in our community's civic responsibility. I sincerely hope you liked what you heard from me today. I think it's clear, based on this evening's discussion, that our community and our schools represent a beacon that draws people in, people from sagebrush, people from surrounding communities, people from all around the country. Think about it for a second. Why did you move here? If you're like me, it was for the schools. And a vote for me is a vote for investing in our future, a future of continued thought leadership and academics. A vote for me is a vote for honoring our legacy, a legacy of educational excellence. I'd like to thank each and every one of you who have endorsed my candidacy, donated to my campaign, put a yard sign in your lawn, and told a friend. Thank you. I deeply appreciate your support. We're almost to the finish line. Please vote for me, Jeremiah Arnold, the right choice for Locking Out a Unified School District Governing Board. Please remember to vote honor before November 3rd. And thank you, and good evening.
Okay, Caroline?
Growing up, my parents always said, "Actions speak louder than words." Tonight, you've heard us talk about what we would do in regards to various initiatives, DEI, reopening, fiscal stewardship. But words with no actions are just words. I have a proven track record of delivering in every segment of our school district and community. I've served on the PTA, District Committee Committees, LCFF, and have supported community outreach initiatives such as sourcing and delivering PPE to at-risk members of our community during this pandemic. Because of my demonstrated commitment to the district, I've gained the respect and endorsement of the Locking Out a Teachers Association. I've always made our students, parents, and teachers a priority and will continue to do so when I am on the board. My passion, commitment, and track record make me the best choice to represent our community. I ask for your vote. I cannot do this without you. Let's build our future together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to everybody that participated, everybody that showed up for this forum. It's hard to get everything in, but we hope that we were helpful. As stated earlier, the League's voter service goal is to promote an informed and involved electorate. We hope that we have succeeded in helping you to be better informed about your choices in the election. Please participate in our democracy by casting your vote on or before November 3rd. Every voter, every voter in LA will receive a mail-in ballot. You can mail it in, drop it off at a drop box, or even go vote in person. If you mail it, it must be postmarked by November 3rd and arrive at the register's office no later than November 20th. For more information on the election and to find your personal ballot, go to cavotes.org, the League's website for all things election-related. Remember, the world is run by people who show up. Thank you again, and good night.